Is it this coming Monday? I'll be on an airplane in. Oh, that's right. I'll be, uh, I don't have my itinerary. Russia, maybe? Saint Peter's. I should, I should, Saint Peter's, the cultural center.
Just go with me first and go with it. You're not on the same page?
I will call the meeting to order and our first order of business, new state law that went into effect July 1st at any public meeting for any entity, we ask for anyone wishing to address us and I don't see anyone having signed up. We will move forward from there. We will begin our school board retreat and first order of business is we have several people that are involved in the JDAI and Erin, if you or whoever wants to kick it off, appreciate it.
I'm kicking it off. I'm running out the door, so I apologize.
We've had a lot of people do that right ahead.
I'm Cindy Haver, I think most of you know me, not all of us, and I am a chair of the county commissioner.
You can sit right here and use some.
Okay, great. Okay. I start, I was in your position quite a few years ago. I started out, my first job was elected official in a school board and I spent 10 years there and then was elected as a county commissioner and my driving force has always been about kids and so I've worked with the county for a long time with, well, my seven and a half years with kids too. And so that's kind of how I come to you with, this is a passion for me to, I'm actually here taking Judge Cutler's position. She couldn't be here today and I just wanted to extend her gratitude for you guys putting this together and allowing us to speak and that her desire to work with you, her and Jamie and the rest of the school board as we move forward with our common goals of what's best for our kids and to increase the better outcomes for them. And that's kind of what our goals have been is the county, they've already done this presentation for Minnehaha County, we're very excited about it and we've already put on staff, or we have already given support to the, the new staff person we're going to put on, the juvenile diversion coordinator and we approved that last week, so that will be coming soon. And I'm very appreciative of you guys taking your time to listen to the presentation and appreciate the support that we get from the school district because you are our biggest people that take care of our kids, so anyway, between you and us. So, anyway, I'm going to turn it over to Erin and I apologize that I have to run out, so I was going to be here for part of the meeting, but I can't now, so. And if you have any questions for Judge Cutler, she said please feel free to reach out to her, she'd be glad to answer any questions that you have. Sorry she can't be here today. So, thank you very much. Take care. Yep, bye.
Can I have a little take this off and hold it? All right, they'll just provide for easier transition as we go through the presentation. There we go.
If you need them.
Okay. Only one, we'll be talking at a time. So I just want to echo what Cindy said and say thank you for this opportunity to present our work. I'm Erin Serska, I'm the program development officer for Minnehaha County Commission. I'm involved in a few different projects, but today we're talking about our juvenile work and our most recent project, the county-led JDAI Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative for about the last seven, almost eight years now with, you know, the main goal of helping our kids and families meet the needs that they need and get some programming. So this is one of the latest projects that has come to fruition out of those work groups and talking together and looking at data. Last summer, we had a kind of, a little bit of a conversation started, Mr. Nold was there, we had the opportunity to have Judge Steve Teske come and we did two-day workshop talking about school justice system partnerships, working out MOUs, best practices, programming and all of that and we're continuing that work next week. Mr. Nold will be there along with other stakeholders to continue that conversation and work towards that goal. So the conversation started there and a state entity, Council for Juvenile Services called up the county and said there was some grant funding available and to send a team from our area to Georgetown University to a certificate program. They have four or five different certificate programs that Georgetown University offers. They use their faculty and they bring in experts from across the nation and you actually legitimately get a certificate and they say it's equivalent to a graduate school, actually class. So we were, it's a competitive process, you have to complete an application at the time, our racial and ethnic fairness coordinator, Annie Brokenleg completed that application for the team and you have to be selected. We were one of few teams selected from across the nation to attend this. It's a week-long training. So we had a team of five go, I did not attend and Annie Brokenleg started it and Rebecca from LSS took her spot when she moved on to a different position. We had Sioux Falls Police Department, our public defender, state's attorney and a judge who was able to attend, the juvenile judge, it was a week long. I got a lot of good information and we were actually recognized for, we were recognized for having such a multidisciplinary team attend. Most places just had kind of focused on nonprofits or different, but what we're highlighted there, why they liked our application and in other national venues, we've been recognized for how South Dakota, especially our area, is able to bring leaders together, talk and come to some solutions. So while they were there, and like I said, it was an intense training, so first of all there was a lot of pre-work, so one, the application, and then two, we had to get together a bunch of data, we had to get together a bunch of policies and send that out and send out some, there was other pre-readings, five or six articles at least, again, it's, they equate it to a grad school, like a class. So we did that pre-work, you go out to Georgetown and you're there for a week and they can, each individual here will talk about their experience and talk about specifically there, but I do know that it's like 8:00 AM to 5:00 or 6:00 PM in tents and that you come out of it with work products and next steps. In fact, you come out of it, you're expected to write a capstone. So what we're going to go into detail today and what the team will is what that capstone is and what it encapsulates based on data and that sort of thing. They had the, they could, they heard about a lot of different programs specifically in relation to working with your school district, getting programs and things to families and they'll get into that as they go, as they present. So CJS, the Council of Juvenile Services, not only paid for the tuition for our team to attend and the travel, but also said your capstone is based on data and we think it looks good, it's based on best practices, we'd like to fund that. So we actually have funding to implement the capstone and we're going to be beginning that here within the next month, so that's something that's very exciting. It's in collaboration with the county. We've reallocated some money to help support this type of work in the community, so between the grant funding, the count and the county allocation, we're able to have this capstone come to fruition. So with that, I'll introduce Rebecca, she's going to be the next to kind of dig into the data, talk about the capstone, then we'll have Jason Leach from the Sioux Falls Police Department, he's an SRO, Andrew Robertson, he's with our Minnehaha County Public Defender and then Carol James, our state's attorney.
I'm going to sit back down because I'm going to talk longer than Erin. I'm more comfortable sitting. So you're probably wondering why I'm doing the presentation since I wasn't actually in Georgetown, but there was some unfortunate turnover in our team that happened right about the time that they completed the capstone and so I stepped in to help the team accomplish its goals and helped them write the capstone, put it together, so they nominated me to share the data with you and talk a little bit about the strategies that the team developed. The process, and Erin may have mentioned this, but the process at Georgetown starts with data and so the team walking into that program didn't know what they wanted to do, but they did have to prepare a lot of data that helps set the stage for whatever the capstone project was going to be. So we're going to start the discussion today with a discussion about the data. And so this is a very simple slide, but I think is illustrative of the challenge that we face. On the left side you see the pie chart that shows the juvenile population breakdown by race. On the right side you see the juvenile arrests from 2016 broken down by race. Now, we know we have 2017 data, we're sharing with you the 2016 data because that's what was available at the time of the capstone, that's what we based the work on. We would expect to see some small shifts in this, but nothing significant, so just to put that out there. So obviously there's a very significant disproportionality, whereas white youth of color represent just twenty, or 23% of the, our youth of color represent 23% of the population, they represent 55% of juvenile arrests. And there's been a lot of national dialogue about racial disparities in justice, both on the adult side and the juvenile side, so we're not alone in this, this is a challenge faced by many jurisdictions. I think what's maybe a little unique about us here in Sioux Falls and South Dakota is the disproportionality among American Indian populations is quite significant here, so that's a bit of a nuance to what, what we have. Now, there are a couple of additional slides we added for you today that we haven't shared in some of our other presentations that I just want to run through real quickly, but these are the top five juvenile arrests for 2016. And the reason I wanted, that we included this into the presentation is to show, demonstrate for you that most of the arrests are nonviolent arrests and most of these arrests are arrests that would indicate that there may be some kind of underlying issue that's being faced by the youth and or the family that may be contributing to the arrest occurring. And so that's a key thing to keep in mind as we think about how do we respond to this to try to reduce, reduce arrests overall and also reduce the disproportionality of juvenile arrests. If you want anything in more detail about that, Carol would be happy to share it with you, I'm sure. Next slide, Erin, if you would flip. So we didn't, there's a lot of data here and we didn't want to break it all down for you, but wanted to provide a couple of extra slides that help provide some clarity on some specific charges that the team looked at when they were analyzing their data, when they were at the work, working group in Georgetown. So on the left-hand side you see the racial breakdown of runaway charges, runaway and chins cases by race. You can see that that disproportionality that we saw in overall arrests is even worse or more significant with that category, as well as the disorderly conduct charges are much more significant within that category. Oh, Erin's handing out paper copies. So I think confirmed for us a direction or an approach that the team decided to take. The data that we didn't include here, but that is a part of what informed the team's decision on strategies is that a significant percentage of overall juvenile arrests occur at school, in a school-based setting. And also when we looked at the data for disproportionality for school-based arrests, it reflected this trend, it was about a 60% youth of color to 40% white youth who were represented in school-based arrests. And so that sort of confirmed the team's desire to pursue a few strategies, which I'll go through next. And these strategies then become the basis for the capstone.
Can you help me understand what a school-based arrest means?
Would be an arrest where the location of the arrest was a school building.
So it wasn't necessarily a crime committed at the school?
Correct.
But the arrest was, took place at the school?
That's an accurate statement, yeah. Okay. So obviously the goal, you know, the certificate program is designed around reducing racial and ethnic disparity, so the overall goal of the capstone is to reduce those disparities. I would say though that the, the strategies that the team is working on will hopefully have an effect on overall outcomes for all youth, even though the target of the project itself is youth of color. So there are four primary strategies and we're going to go into a little bit more detail about each of these strategies, so I'm just going to kind of skip this slide and go to the next one, actually. So the first, the first major strategy, and Erin made an allusion to Judge Teske's visit last summer, I think some of you were participants in Judge Teske's visit, but there has been a lot of success in other jurisdictions across the country when basically schools, law enforcement and the court systems all get together and work out memorandum of understanding that outlines what are we going to do as a community to respond to incidents that occur among juveniles. And it's really based on the premise that we have all these different systems interacting with youth and touching their lives in different ways, but our ultimate goal and the community's goal as a whole is that we want to keep kids in school, we want to keep them successful and on a path toward graduation and ultimately success. So what the MOU does is help to coordinate between those systems what the response is and have agreed upon and planned responses that everyone can agree on. And we were going to talk about success stories from some specific school justice partnerships, but what we found is that those are really linked to the next strategy, so I'm going to wait and they're going to come up and share some success stories that they learned about while they were at the capstone related to school justice partnership. Now, last summer as a recap, we had Judge Teske come in, but we really didn't follow up with any series of formal meetings to formalize an MOU agreement. And so our hope is that with some of the funding that CJS provided through their fund source, that Judge Teske's visit can kind of kick off another conversation about MOUs and that we can work toward a finalized, formalized MOU within Minnehaha County about how we worked. Yes?
Who is Judge Teske?
I'm sorry. Judge Teske is known as a national expert. There's actually a specific certificate Georgetown program called School Justice System Partnerships that's targeted specifically at this and he's one of the key faculty. He has numerous publications and white papers nationally and academically. He's recognized on national, various boards and that sort of thing, so he's kind of known as the national expert. He actually spent, has spent most of his career down at Atlanta, Clayton County. And we were able, I've heard him at multiple different national conferences talking about how they were able to bring, and when they did the presentation, it brought, they brought him, but he also brought the superintendent and the police chief and the other stakeholders that worked through the process together. So when we were there last, we can talk about that too, about when Deb was there. So there was, the whole team was there. So that's who Judge Teske is and I can send over the publications and that sort of thing. Also.
I just didn't know if he was like a South Dakota judge or, you know.
And it's, you just get so used to, right, in your discipline. We also have, at the end if you're interested, some of the data slides that were presented last year from their model too.
Thank you. So, so that's strategy number one for, for us. The second strategy that, as the team sort of listened to speakers throughout the course of the week that they were there, that seemed like it was an intervention that worked in a lot of jurisdictions that were facing some of the same challenges that we're facing here in Minnehaha County. And that is to hire a juvenile diversion coordinator. And really what a juvenile diversion coordinator is, is a social worker or counselor, someone who's trained to assess families, who, who makes contact with the youth and the family in the immediate aftermath of whatever happened, whatever the arrest was or the charge was. And so the timeframes that we're sort of setting is the goal for this position is that that individual will make contact with the youth within 24 to 48 hours. We know that one of the challenges within our current system is that there's, there can be a delay based on how our systems work and the processes involved. That means that once an arrest happens, it could be, it could be weeks before, you know, there's a next step or follow-up or any kind of outreach in terms of determining what happens with that youth and also in trying to connect them with services. So the juvenile diversion coordinator will meet with the youth and family, complete an assessment, that assessment will help hopefully that individual understand what are some of the factors contributing to the incident that we could address with need or with social services that are already in the community. So if the family is having difficulty and they're not functioning well and that conflict is leading to whatever happened at school, maybe we need to get that youth refer, and that family referred to functional family therapy, which is a service that's already available in the community. So that's sort of the concept behind the juvenile diversion coordinator. So because of the, the funding that was approved both through the Council on Juvenile Services and Minnehaha County, we have hired a juvenile diversion coordinator, she's been employed, she'll be an employee of Lutheran Social Services and we have a contract then with Minnehaha County, so she'll be working as a part of, at least for the time being, as a part of our LSS team. And so she's been doing some training and getting connected with the state's attorney's data systems and she will actually begin this process on August 15th, I have the wrong date, it says August 14th, but it'll be August 15th. Our thought process with that is that it will give us about a week and a half of experience before school gets back in session and then we can really focus in on what's going on at the schools. And so with that, I will turn it over to Carol and Jason, who are going to talk a little bit about success stories.
I was just going to, can we just stand or you want to? I sit all the time, I would prefer to stand. Thank you so much for listening to us and allowing us to present to you. We are really excited to be here and tell you what we've been working on and are excited and happy that the district is sending Mr. Nold next week to participate in the MOU process. Let me start with a little bit of background about how things are now compared to what this is to maybe put into perspective why this is awesome. Chins stands for child in need of supervision. It generally means that you've done something that's wrong simply because you're a child. So if you run away from home or you're not listening to your parents, you could be called in as a chin, so your parents could call the police and say, you know, Johnny didn't come home by 6:00 PM like I told him to, he's a runaway. And then he might come home at 8:00 PM, then they call back and say, well, he's home now. But that case gets assigned to a school resource officer who the next day at school will have contact with Johnny and say, why didn't you come home? They'll do a report and then the arrest might be at home or at school. It could, it just kind of depends, maybe the child doesn't come home right away and then they don't find law enforcement until they show up at school the next day. And so then that becomes a school-based arrest because the child is sitting in math class when the SRO has contact with them. Right now, when kids have contact with law enforcement, unless they're actually put in handcuffs and taken to a facility and see a judge the next day, the reports just get sent to our office to review for charging purposes or diversion. And depending on what we're up to and, you know, how many cases we have and whatever, we might not actually review that police report on a kid for a week or two. It just kind of depends. So by then, they could have run away six more times, they could have committed multiple other, you know, misdemeanor offenses before we even get a chance to review it. So making contact with the family within 24 to 48 hours to let them know, we're aware of the situation, you've been referred to us, we're planning to do something about this and meet with you and assess the situation is, is something that our office has not been able to provide because of staffing needs. We often have parents call the very next day and say, what's happening with my kid? What's the court date? And it's like, we haven't even read the report yet. Take a deep breath, slow down, we'll, we'll get to it. But this will actually allow a social worker, or at least a person with a master's in social work, meet with this child or at least have contact with the kid and family very quickly and then set up a time to do the assessment and let them know, let the child know, your behavior has been noticed. And I think sometimes kids think because, yeah, they had contact with an officer, but nothing happened, that nobody knows what's going on and they can continue to do whatever is they're doing, but this time we'll have multiple system members talking to them and in fact, we actually have created a, like a half sheet of paper that the officer is going to give to the person that says, you know, you've been referred, if you don't do this, you will be prosecuted. So they know from the get-go that this is important. We also right now don't have the ability to call a direct referral to counseling or other types of services like that, a diversion. And so we are seeking with our presiding judge in the circuit right now to get approval for that so that we can consider that a diversion, just getting them the services. And right now, when we believe in our office as prosecutors that a child needs counseling or needs services, we refer them to the court service or probation department and they informally reach out to the family and do a diversion that way in order to get them into services, but because they're also supervising kids who are actually on probation, they don't have the time or resources to make immediate contact. So sometimes they send multiple letters, leave voicemails and it's a month they have had no contact and then they send the case back to us. This way we'll have a person that's actually tracking them down immediately to make sure they want and need these services rather than wasting court services' time when they can be supervising actual kids who are on probation that need legitimate supervision. So that's another difference in this. When we went to Georgetown and we heard from other jurisdictions, as, as Erin said, everybody was really impressed with our team. There was a defense attorney on our team, Mr. Robertson, there were no other defense attorneys in the room. There were 11 teams from 11 different jurisdictions and no other defense attorneys in the room. There was one other prosecutor in the room and she was on a team by herself. She was doing all of this work by herself. I can't even imagine how she was doing that. I, I mean, if we didn't have Rebecca, half of this would have gotten done. We don't have time to do all of that by ourselves, but there was two other law enforcement, three, one, one other? Okay, so there was a total of two law enforcement officers in the room of all of these 11 teams that applied to get into Georgetown. And then there were a handful of other judges, maybe three to five other judges. Otherwise, the teams were made up of like social worker, probation, detention or shelter care type facility staff or statisticians, like the, one of the teams that sat at our table from Arizona, like one of their main people on the team was a data person and so then of course she was talking about data the whole week and we were like, well, Erin's our data person and she's not here. Yeah, we had a lot of texts to Erin about what our data shows, but it was, it was really amazing to hear from all these other jurisdictions how a lot of them didn't even have diversion to begin with. They were actually creating diversion programs and we've been doing diversion in this county for years. So it was, it was very exciting to know that we are doing something that we should be doing and then on top of it, we came up with this idea to make it even better and make sure that these kids are getting the services that they need. There were, there were two counties from Iowa that presented on similar type programs and then there was a county from Florida and then Philadelphia, Pennsylvania as well. And when the Philadelphia, Pennsylvania person prepared his, or showed us his, I guess, presentation, his name was Kevin Bethel and he's the retired deputy police commissioner, they are obviously overrepresented in the arrests of African-American youth and they looked into all of that. The way he put on his presentation was very similar to our MOU process that we've talked about with Judge Teske and they developed a youth and law enforcement curriculum and a police school-based diversion where they would actually do role-play with kids and let the kids be the officer and the officers were the kids and kind of showed how it works on the other side of the coin and I think it went a long way in their jurisdiction to help kids understand the position law enforcement are in and vice versa. They had a diversion that was for first-time offenders with 13 to 14 eligible offenses and if there was non-compliance, then the child would not be referred to it the next time. They also didn't do arrest paperwork, it was a pre-arrest diversion, which is what ours is anticipated to be. Well, what, what we are planning on doing is that the school resource officer can refer directly to our diversion coordinator and bypass the state's attorney's office or the state's attorney's office can refer to the diversion coordinator. Right now, we're only going to have this available for the school resource officers rather than putting it out to all of patrol to see how it works and make sure that, you know, everything's working the way we want it to work before we would try to open it up. I mean, I don't know, there's a lot of patrol officers, so I'm not sure if we'll ever be able to open it up to all of patrol, but we, we would like to try it this way at first for some data in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, which I'm sure you all are aware is a very large jurisdiction. Their arrests at school decreased by 65% from 2014 to 2017 and they had a 12% reduction in school disciplinary issues. So it was, it was changing the way law enforcement officers interacted with kids. And we learned a lot that week about how, based on the way the officer is reacting to the kid and way the kid is reacting to the officer can drive the situation. I mean, if the officer comes in- I mean, if the officer comes in perceiving something a certain way and the kid comes in with their own perceptions, it could blow up and you end up with a resisting charge that you maybe wouldn't have had if people reacted differently. And, and sometimes, you know, youth of color, I guess there, there are more issues with people perceiving things that kids, that youth of color are doing versus white kids. And we learned a lot about that, that week as well. Do you have anything to add about the Philadelphia one? Okay. So, the next jurisdiction that we had a couple of different presentations on was Alachua County, Florida. There was a retired law enforcement officer named William Halvosa that presented on that and then also one of the Georgetown faculty staff actually presented on that too and had done a study of how well it worked in their jurisdiction. But, they had a very similar capstone project to what we did. They were wanting to reduce the number of arrests and increase the use of diversion for youth of color. They had seven schools involved initially, but they had way more than that in their county and wanted to bring all schools on board. They did develop an MOU with their school board as well. And the MOU contemplated handling school misconduct and misdemeanor offenses. They created ISS versus OSS. So, in that county in Florida, which I think was Gainesville, they didn't have ISS when they started this, which seems crazy to me, but they developed that through this process. And I, I think the theme there was that it was really working well because the system, the juvenile justice system partnered with the district and everybody was working together as a team to address the behaviors. They saw a 44% reduction in arrests of African-American youth and a 28% reduction in arrests of white youth. And they also had a civil citation process, which I think is probably similar to our citation process. And they increased the use of those citations from 40 to 70%, which I think then helped reduce their numbers as well. Anything you want to add about Florida?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, absolutely.
I just, I, I know you'll probably pipe in at some point, but in the case studies that you saw, I mean, I already think our SROs do a phenomenal job in our school district and we're so thankful to have you there, but were there any, any, was there anything you actually learned from these other case studies or were you feeling pretty confident that, you know what, we're doing a lot of this already?
Well, I think Carol touched on it. I mean, we, we came into this not really knowing what's going on around the rest of the country and we really learned from our perspective that we're doing things right here. We're, we're leaps and bounds ahead of some of the other agencies that were there in other parts of the country. So, yeah, we're doing things right, but I think there's always room for improvement too. So, we showed you the slides of our disproportionality here and I think there's, there's room for improvement and there's things that we can do partnering with the school district, with the, with the state's attorney's office, public defender's office, court systems, everybody working together. And I think that's where the school justice partnership comes to, comes to, to the highlight of all of this is partnering together. But, from our standpoint, I think some of the things that we can do, when Carol's talking about the diversion coordinator, right now, basically what happens if Vanessa R. O. has contact with a student at school and there is a chargeable offense, they're, they're doing a case report and it's considered a unrest report and that, that's getting just sent to Carol and Audi and it, like she said, it might be a couple of days, it might be a week, it might, and then longer for somebody from a diversion standpoint to contact that youth. Well, I mean, if you have kids, you realize that we need more, a quicker response to that, you have a stimulus to that cause. And if we, if, as SROs, I can empower SROs to, hey, we, we encountered one of these five violations that we're going to start off with in the school and/or coming back to school. The, the school-based arrests is, is the arrest location, if we did find a kid at school from a runaway, that's, that's why that location is there. But, if we can immediately call the diversion coordinator and say, hey, I've got Johnny here, this is, this is a violation, that person will be able to look up on the computer and say, hey, this is Johnny's first offense, he's eligible for diversion and then we're gonna, that report is still going to get done, but it's going to get forwarded on to the diversion coordinator to have that immediate contact. The report's still sitting there because ultimately our diversion coordinator will have the, have the power to contact the state's attorney's office and say, hey, Johnny didn't complete this, they said they were going to come, they never came, reached out to him, I can't contact him. And then it would go for formal prosecution at that point or maybe a different diversion through the state's attorney's office. But, I think right now, from my standpoint, seeing what's going on around the country, I think we're doing great things here and we're really progressive and our relationship between the police department and the school district is phenomenal. We, we heard from some agencies that it, it is not that case at all. They don't, they don't want the cops in their school at all. They don't want SROs in their schools, they don't want any of that. And so, it was really, really good for us to see that we have such a strong relationship and we can just keep building on that for, going forward, making this successful, so.
The last jurisdiction, oh no, you're fine.
I wanted to talk anyway.
I've asked you twice now if you had anything to add. The last jurisdiction is Johnson County, Iowa, and a judge, that's a current judge there, spoke on that. Her name was Deborah Minat. And they also had a similar capstone project. She and her team had actually come to Georgetown previously and done the capstone as well. And they implemented a graduated sanctions grid for in-school behaviors and then also created a community-based pre-arrest diversion like this for disorderly conduct charges. Their school-based arrests were down 61% over the first two years and they reduced their percentage of arrests of African-American youth by 25%. In the year of 2014, they referred 16 African-American youth to their diversion and 14 out of those 16 kids successfully completed the diversion. And despite the fact that over the four-year time span that she had data for, their juvenile population actually increased over that four years, but their arrests were down 32.6% overall. And then the arrests of African-American youth were down 19%, Hispanic youth were down by 54% and arrests of white youth were also down by 43%. And their diversion was a little unique because it did not actually require parental involvement. There was a lot of discussion about, you know, if the parent can't get there because they have to work or the parent doesn't want to participate. I mean, we have parents now that refuse to participate that say, no, I want my kid to go to court, I'm not going to do this because they're mad. But, their diversion actually didn't require parental, you know, cooperation or participation and so, they were still able to provide services to those kids without letting the parents stand in the way. So, it was, all of those things were like, very eye-opening and I was excited to hear that other jurisdictions were seeing success in this and actually had numbers to back, back the success. So, anything you wanted to add about Johnson County or the other county in Iowa?
And it was, that was the pleasant thing to see is that it's not just these big cities on the coast doing this stuff. I mean, we had smaller towns in our, in our area, Johnson County, Iowa, Iowa City is, is the area that they're working with down there where Carol just talked about the data there. But then also Davenport, Iowa is also doing this. So, they both have gone through the capstone project that we went through, created, created the capstone project from the class and implemented it. So, it's, it's reassuring to see that smaller jurisdictions, our size maybe a little bit smaller, a little bit bigger, have, have implemented this and been successful in it. And I think the important part to take away from it all is, when we talk about the disproportionality of it all and reducing those, those arrests, but also, I mean, it affects everybody. I mean, it's not like we're only going to offer the diversion program for minority students, it's, it's all students. So, it's, it's all encompassing. I think that's the important thing to take in, that it's not just, the focus is there, but obviously the numbers support that, hey, we need to start doing something different. And I think as we build this, it's, it's going to come to, you know, we maybe need some more diversion programs and that's, and that's our next building stone or building and stepping stone for going forward. So, and that's just partnering with the community to come up with more resources and culturally diverse resources for, for our students, so.
And part of the, the numbers that were presented, I know, with the Minnehaha County data, it's based on the percent. But, overall, the arrests have gone down significantly as well, am I correct?
You mean arrests in general?
General arrests have actually, yeah, the number of arrests that stays, I don't know, the, the arrests haven't gone down significantly, they've been trending down and the number of youth have, yes, overall, the number of arrests have, have been trending down, yeah. But, a lot of times-
Is that a result of the JDAI?
I would say that it's a result of just people coming together and law enforcement looking for different opportunities for kids and responding to kids in different ways. I don't think it's a result of any one specific thing, but law enforcement comes upon something that needs to be arrested, they arrest the youth still. So, it's just responding to kids at the right ti, kids and families, right place, right time and trying to forward the ones we can to the services that we have. And we can set up a different time, I have 10 years of trend data that I can talk about forever, it's my, about that.
I guess as an overall, the number of arrests, I believe, have gone down in each of the categories of ethnicity, it's just that the one still has a larger-
Right. And, and if you look at, I can talk about rates and percentage differences and I'm out of school, so I could probably have some math teachers to help me out, try to make it a little bit more fun, but I won't go down that road. But, yes, usually what happens with percentages, as you bring down the total number, the percentages can sometimes be, look a lot different than they did when the numbers were higher. But, there is still a disproportionality and disproportionality means there's a difference. What these policies and programs do is what we really want to look at is how do we change the numbers, that disproportionality, is you try to address the disparity. Disparity talks about treating each kid the same, similarly situated kids the same. So, no matter what, the youth's race, socioeconomic, any of that, that we have the same decision point. So, that's what these policies look at for that. And I'll turn it back over in just one second to talk about cultural, but I know you, some, the folks that were involved in a Teske one last saw this, but we don't, what's important about this process too in the MOU is we don't just look at just simply arrests, the schools as partners, also look at their data. So, some of this data that we have, I have here, I'll leave here. They talk about school suspensions overall and how those went down. And you can see on here, there's a big gray where it dipped and he's like, nope, they actually didn't dip that far, actually someone didn't do their job, so they got, he has a funny story about how someone got in a little bit of trouble, but they implemented the different things. And they also look at arrests pre and post. So, there's some good information to make sure that everyone's tracking and having positive outcomes for that.
I was just going to add that I think Senate Bill 73, which was passed a few years ago, also contributed probably to the number of arrests being down. Just because it, it depends on, there's four different offenses that you can be cited for, I don't know if they're perceiving those sites when a site is issued as an arrest or not. And then also, there are certain offenses that you can no longer go to the Department of Corrections for and so, I think there are less parents reporting the CHINS-type issues because the consequences are different as far as what results they're seeing in court. And so, I, I think it's fair that we often see reports on kids for running away where it might be the first time they've actually literally reported it, but they'll tell the officer, well, they've run away 17 times, I just haven't reported it. So, I think some of that is contributing too, is that there might be less reporting of actual offenses going on.
One other thing to add on that too, is when we get to the runaway charges, like, like Carol said, if we can, these, these other entities that we reported on, they were seeing, if they contacted the youth first-time offense, they weren't seeing that youth again. I think that's something that we, we haven't touched on yet and that's really important in all this. I mean, we talked about numbers going down and everything else, but right now, I mean, when we look at reports between Carol, Audi and I, we, we recognize names because it's over and over and your principals recognize names because it's over and over and over. What, what they're seeing through this programming and having the alternatives here is for diversion is that, that one kid, that if we can contact them right away, get them services and get them on the straight and narrow, they're not seeing them again. That's what these jurisdictions are saying. So, I mean, and their data supports it, they're just, they're not seeing recidivism, they're not seeing that. And like Carol said, you know, right now, we might have a kid run away six times before they even seen the court services officer who said, you know, I'm here to talk to you about this, well, I've already done this, this and this in between there. So, that's our struggle right now and I think if we can get to that point of contacting them early and implementing some strategies with them, hopefully we won't see them again. So, in the juvenile justice system. So, we'll see them in school more and more and more.
And that was part of what Judge Teske had presented last summer. He, I remember a bar graph that he had put up that listed like the first-time offenses and then second, third and fourth. And the first-time offenses, there was like 400 and some kids with first-time offenses, but then the second and third were like 75, 50, 20. So, while some kids were, yes, re-offending and having multiple offenses, the vast majority were not because of implementation of something like this. So, that's what we're seeking. Lots of kids make a mistake once, that doesn't mean they have to make it again. So, Rebecca?
Yeah, I'll just finish up real quick. So, the last twos, there's still two strategies that we're working toward. One is that we recognize that the representation, for example, of the Native American youth in our numbers are disproportionately high and we have currently a lack of culturally-informed programming that would target those youth and integrate culture into the interventions that are offered. And so, we don't have this completely honed on in terms of how, how we're going to pull this off, but one of the strategies is to try to expand the options that are available to those youth and the flexibility that we may gain with a diversion officer being able to refer directly to service delivery programs and, and count that as a successful diversion is that we may be able to refer to programs that already exist in the community, don't take someone reinventing the wheel that are evidence-based and can help produce better outcomes for those youth, so. And then the last piece, and I don't know if this has come up in, in the group's recollection, but what struck me from listening to them all talk about their experiences in Georgetown is that there was an element of training on implicit bias that was woven into the curriculum that was very meaningful and impactful for the participants who were there. And implicit bias, for those who might not know, is, is an unconscious unintentional bias, so it's a bias that exists without our knowing, that's, impacts how we respond to situations in ways that we can't predict because we're not conscious of it. And obviously, implicit bias has an impact on lots of different things, not excluding juvenile justice systems. And so, the team came back really very energized by the training that they had received on this. And so, we are bringing the same trainer that they had in Georgetown to Sioux Falls next Monday, actually, for anyone who's still interested, we have slots available, you can sign up to, to come to do that same training. And what we've done is structured the AM session so that it's a more general stakeholder training where members of the public and concerned people can join in that training. And then we've scheduled an afternoon session that's targeted more toward law enforcement. So, we have some SROs and, and folks who are seeing, you know, seeing the impact of implicit bias and, and juvenile justice on a day-to-day basis. So, that, that comes on August 6th. And I can say that the discussions with that, the team has been having has raised interest at the state level and within other jurisdictions about how we could train more on implicit bias and raise awareness, but then also focus in on what do we do about it? Because it's one of those things that's kind of hard to figure out. You, you become aware of it, but then it's unconscious, so how do you deal with it? So, that'll be the focus of the work moving forward. And then there's, I think, just one more slide that talks about funding. I think what's been great about this partnership is you see, we're all kind of working together to make this work. The Council on Juvenile Services, the funding that they're using to support this project is focused on, it's that DMC or disproportionate minority contact money that the state receives from the feds. So, it has to be targeted for youth of color. And so, they couldn't fund a full FTE for a diversion coordinator because that diversion coordinator is going to be working with all youth, but they were open to funding the percentage of the position that would reflect the percentage of youth who have been arrested who are youth of color. And so, what the county has then done is said, okay, if you can put down the 59%, the county will put down the rest for the FTE to make that position a whole position and then we can deploy that person to work with all of our youth in the school, school district. And then, the Council on Juvenile Services funding paid for everything else that we've talked about today. So, a really great partnership between different organizations.
Is that ongoing? Is it something you have to apply for?
That's a good question, because I was just going to actually follow up with that. Because that's something, and you talked about, was this because of JDAI or what? And I'm doing JDAI for the last seven years, I think one of the main things, that's one of the best strategies, everyone coming around the table saying, okay, we know this is a need, this is our data, we finally have all the data we want. And you talked about, we've been looking at that for the last few years, how can we bring things together to make it work? And this is just one example of that. I love data, I love research, want to make sure we're doing, trying the best practices and if it doesn't work, make sure we're, we're willing to say that to ourselves. And that's a piece of this. So, we're going to be able to try it out, we piece together funding to get this position up and going, we'll be looking at data, not just to see if it worked or not, but also to identify gaps in the service delivery that we're talking about. These are the services we have, what services are we missing? We can bring that data to the stakeholders, talk about how we can get those programs going. The sustainability piece is huge. And if this does provide the similar data effects and effects on our children and families that we're seeing in other places, that's where the leaders come together and say, okay, because it's not, it's grant funding, so it is finite, how do we come together to make sure that we continue this process and even grow it or multiply it? And if we can do this with one person or a larger district, how can we do it in our area with two folks? So, that will be something that we come after a year of funding to figure out, how do we, one, continue the work we're doing and grow it? And two, what are the gaps in services or what services do we need, do we have that we need to expand? So, that is something that everyone's talked about and is on the table and we understand that if it works, the leaders know that we want to make sure that it continues. And we have leadership from, from the top everywhere agreeing on that. Just before we wrap up and open it up for complete questions and discussion, there's two folks here that haven't had a time to chat yet for sure. Andrew Robertson, he's the public defender that came on just to give his perspective of all the things that he learned. And then also, our new, we do have a new racial and ethnic fairness coordinator. One of the contracts we have with Lutheran Social Services is to hire somebody that coordinates racial and ethnic fairness work plans and strategies, uh, and that's Rebecca Donaldson right there. So that's why she's here taking some notes. So I'll hand it over to Andrew.
Thank you. Thanks for having us here this afternoon. I just wanted to talk about a couple of things and really just kind of echo some of the things that you've heard here today. So Aaron had mentioned, I'm an attorney at the Public Defender's Office. I've been there for about five years now. I've been, I took over the juvenile rotation about two years ago, and, um, that's really my sole focus is, is representing juveniles that are coming through the system and, and having some contacts with, with courts. As a part of, of my position, I'm, um, working on the, uh, the ref group. I'm co-chair with, with Carol of the ref group. I'm a part of the, on the Juvenile Justice Oversight Council out in Pierce as well. And so I really have, uh, kind of emerged myself in, in this idea of juvenile justice and, and in particular, some of the issues that we see, um, as they progress through the system and, and progress through, um, some of the issues that they, they have while they're growing up. I, uh, as mentioned, did want to echo that, um, I'm really excited about the implementation of this diversion program. This was an idea that we got from, uh, our time out at Georgetown and, and the information that we were provided at Georgetown was just phenomenal, the coursework. Um, and to me, um, the thing that stood, stood out in particular was just the outcomes. And you heard from, from Jason and Carol about some of those outcomes. I mean, we look at, um, Philadelphia and Gainesville, those are jurisdictions that really look nothing like us, and, uh, they were seeing positive outcomes out of these diversion type programs. I had, um, noted here, uh, that they told us, uh, that Philadelphia had the eighth largest public education system in the nation. They had, um, the fifth largest city, also the fourth largest police department. And so it's, it's amazing to see that they can start implementing, um, these types of things in, in a jurisdiction that's so large that, and, and still see some of the same, um, outcomes. The skeptic in me kind of said, well, you know, maybe it'll work there, but, but, uh, how's it gonna work in South Dakota, Sioux Falls? And, and that's where these jurisdictions from Iowa coming in and talking to us really, um, took hold and, and kind of showed to me anyways that this is something that we can, we can implement and, and be successful at, um, here in South Dakota. Obviously, um, we're all in it for the, for the kids, and we want to make sure that the kids that we see, um, in the criminal justice system have an opportunity to be successful. And that's really ultimately what I think everybody's goal here is. And, and so the diversion program and implementing that, I think that, uh, it's important because every, every kid has different needs. And so whether it's initially, um, a social skills issue, behavioral issues, mental health, um, things, uh, a little bit more basic such as problem solving skills, or if it's anger management or treatment or whatever it may be, I think that we need to have some sort of an outlet to, to make sure that these kids are getting, uh, the services that they, that they do need. As a public defender, it seems like a lot of times by the time I see a kid, um, things and issues have been compounded. And so, you know, it's, it's something where maybe initially it was a behavioral issue or, or some sort of, uh, just basic social skills issue initially. By the time I come in contact with them, maybe it's not only that, but it's also a treatment issue and maybe an individual therapy issue or something along those lines. So absolutely, I think the, um, the diversion program will, will help address some of that. Diversions are there to, to allow us to, to better understand the needs of the kids. And, and I think that, um, the program will allow us to, to not only have quicker contact, quicker response, uh, but in turn, I think that the program will be, uh, a way for us to continue, um, to make sure our kids are accountable and, and learning from some of these mistakes that they're, that they're getting themselves into, but also give us a chance to respond quickly, um, in a way that, uh, we know is effective, that we know is fair and, and, um, a way that we can help get some of the youth over the, the hurdles that we're, we're seeing. So thanks for having us.
Nice wrap-up. So, um, with that, is there any questions or comments?
So the cultural training hasn't been set yet, that's kind of been the worst, but we can see a date on that.
Right. The cultural programming, right, we're trying, um, a big thing too, as we do kind of inter-system planning and bringing folks together is not to duplicate services. Uh, Urban Indian Health is starting talking circles, so that's where we're gonna start, um, as far as culturally based programming. Um, and we want to make sure that, um, the cultural programming comes from the culture and, and begin those focus groups and subgroups, um, as work with the RAF and looking for other partners, um, you know, within our community to, to develop those. So the one culturally based program that was talked about in Georgetown that we're gonna kind of start and work with is at those talking circles. So yeah, there isn't a set date yet.
Is there a set level, the, the person that's been hired, uh, as the diversion coordinator, a set level of offenses that they will reach out to right away?
Um, yeah, the, uh, initially, we're gonna just, so eventually it's gonna be more, but initially we're going to refer chins, disorderly conduct, marijuana and paraphernalia, and petty thefts, more than $50. So if a kid is stealing a bag of chips at the school store, they're gonna get a citation and go to citation court. Um, but if they're stealing a Chromebook from the school district perhaps, then they're going to be potentially referred to this. Now, if there's restitution involved with those thefts, then, um, we still need to work out a process of how that's gonna logistically work, but having restitution on an offense doesn't necessarily preclude it from being diverted, and so they'll still, they could still be diverted. Um, but like I said from the beginning, if, if they don't comply or they don't take part in this, then they will be prosecuted. That's what's going to happen. So we're trying to make it clear to them that we're trying to give them an opportunity to change this, not have this on their record, make right what they did wrong. Um, but if they don't want to do that, then they get to come to court, so.
That answered my second question.
Right, right. Any other questions for anyone else on the team?
I don't know if we're gonna get into this, but just, you had referenced the MOU with the school district. Are we gonna talk about that?
Yeah, so next week, um, when Judge Teske comes back with his team, we are having a two-day meeting with various people, and on Thursday next week, we'll be focused on the educators in the community, um, law enforcement, our office and him to start hammering out some details. Nothing has been drafted yet. Uh, Mr. Nold is coming to that. Um, there's lots of other jurisdictions that have developed these MOUs, and, um, Judge Cutler actually wanted me to draft one last summer that we could all just sign, and when I started reading them, I'm like, no, this is not happening. We need to talk about things some more before I'm gonna draft anything. So that's part of what's gonna happen next week, um, is that we're gonna sit down and try to hammer out some details. I have created a list of what, what Judge Teske calls focus acts, which are the acts or crimes that are subject to the MOU in other jurisdictions. So I've created that list that we're gonna give out next week at the meeting and talk about what potential consequences would be. Um, a lot of other jurisdictions, just for the first offense, depending on what the actual offense is, just have a school discipline referral. So it doesn't necessarily result in even a referral to the diversion coordinator, there would just be school discipline the first time. So we need to talk about those details, figure out on these types of offenses, are we willing to do that? Are we not willing to do that? How that all looks, and then just hammer out the whole process. So, um, I would assume Mr. Nold will be in further contact with you as a board and, and Superintendent Maher as we actually get close to signing.
And just the, the list that she made, she didn't decide it on her own, that list was a result of the two-day workshop from, from last year, and there was other school districts from, in the entire county. Yeah, those offense list was from last year. And I will, um, we will be scheduling a follow-up with, with the MOU. Everyone has a lawyer that comes and sits at the table, so everyone's, we'll get, we all can smile. Thank you for your work. But, um, so we'll, that will be something that will be coming to you, and we can, um, you know, bring the whole team back and present in an informal way to discuss in detail, and um, we'll look to Mr. Nold to kind of lead that chart.
The list of crimes is all non-violent misdemeanors. The only thing that is potentially violent on the list is disorderly conduct, and that would be mutual, despite the school generally speaking. So anything that would be assaultive or sexually assaultive is not included.
Yeah, and, um, it's something else that we can bring in, I can forward, is there's actually, um, a national, it's a, it's a training protocol that we are using to go through developing the MOU, um, that's set out for a school, for specifically school justice system partnerships. Um, so we got through kind of the first few boxes, remember writing all that stuff down? He like makes you write all this stuff. So we, we're halfway through those templates that we all know and love, and so we're hoping to continue to finalize those, those templates, that process, which will actually be the, the kind of draft of the MOU and then bring it back to all the entities.
So in terms of the, the, I guess, more severe offenses like an assault or, uh, I'm even thinking like gun possession with maybe intent or perceived intent, those are just gonna go through the normal process? Like, am I opening up a bag of worms?
No.
Um, no, that's a good question. So the current possession of weapon in school charge doesn't require any intent for anything other than to knowingly possess.
Yeah, I mean, I know the state law.
So that's mandatory diversion. That is one of the focus acts that's listed. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that circumstances surrounding that offense won't mean that we'll take it out of mandatory diversion and file it anyway. Um, but anything that would be an assault or you have a gun and you're there to threaten somebody with the gun, then you're gonna be charged with aggravated assault, and we're gonna get the report, and you're most likely gonna be prosecuted, not diverted. I will not say that our office has never, um, diverted a felony or never diverted an assault. We have, um, a lot of times like family type situations where a kid is pushing a parent or something like that, and they've never been in trouble before. They obviously need some family counseling, so we will attempt diversion on those. But when it's a kid assaulting another kid at school and it's very clear that there's a history of aggressive behavior or no contact conditions or things like, those kids are getting prosecuted, they're not gonna be subject to this.
And so those are more severe, I mean, they're already going through the diversion process, so the whole, sort of the purpose of this is to catch maybe the, maybe the more minor offenses, but not have them sit for a month, actually have, you know, more immediate contact.
Immediate response for an immediate consequence to prevent further repetitive negative behaviors. Yes.
It's all making sense now.
That was part that was missing probably in some of the previous. Uh, we even had that discussion about somebody that could be the oversight of that, such as the diversion coordinator, and, and we didn't have that avenue.
Right.
Or that process, so that somebody could make those direct contacts right away. Judge Teske did. His courts had provided those, they had what sounded like far greater resources dollar-wise to be able to designate people like that.
Yeah.
Uh, so that was a missing component of that in some earlier discussions, and, and so it's been an ongoing process, but it, it's good that some of those things are moving forward.
Yeah, but you're exactly right. Um, the focus of this is, and really the violent crime in general is, you know, the minority, 10% of, of anything usually takes up 90% of your time. So what we're trying to do is meet the kid and the family where they're at, just to kind of end on some creative, get your creative juices flowing a little bit. There's been really creative, innovative partnerships in other places, um, like with their Business Community for Restitution. Um, we all know workforce entry level is an issue to fill those. Um, so what businesses or governmental entities have done is say, here, I'll write you a check out for 10 hours a week for the year. Um, part of it goes to the staff, and then kids can work off restitution or, um, or do community service, and the money from that goes to, um, pay off the restitution. A lot of time with, with youth and the youth families, it's hard to get restitution paid anyway, so that's one really good program. Or sometimes we think about consequence or what you have to do. A lot of the different diversion programs are like, well, you have to choose an activity to be involved in, and we have vouchers to make sure that happens. So what activity do you want? I don't care if it's school, like something, Boy Scouts, school, you know, sports, music, chess, anything you want, a job. Um, so some of that too is connecting youth and with positive things to fill their time, so when they're done with the diversion, there's, there's something there to, to fill that time. So if you hear anything fun, let us know.
Well, I think, I mean, I think that's, you know, a great idea, because it's just, you know, idle hands, right?
Right.
And, you know, if you get them, we all have seen this statistics that if you, if kids are involved in school and involved in activities, whether it's sports or theater or chess or whatever, you know, they're less inclined maybe to.
Yeah, and that's, so that was part of, one of, as I've looked at and toured different places across the nation, that was this one piece that I know our community will be able to come around and say, okay, so what, so as your consequence, you need to do so many hours a week in an activity, and if you don't pick one, I will choose one for you. So usually that gives them the motivation and they have, the community is able to come, and if there's monetary or other transportation, the diversion coordinator or the, the staff helps meet that need, so then the youth can get involved in something.
And another part that's probably being responded to by the hiring of, of that diversion coordinator is the follow-up. Um, because there's individuals who are referred to, you know, functional family therapy, but if they don't follow through, then what's recourse? If there's not somebody on the oversight of that or watching that, it's, it's tough to follow up. Uh, individuals may not know, and then that student is cleared, yet they continue to do the same act. So that part's good.
I guess I would just add, you know, Michelle Seaton is the name of the juvenile diversion coordinator. Um, she's not going to be here because she had a prior scheduled vacation during this time when we hired her, so. Um, but if you want to schedule time for her to come out and talk with your building principals or, um, you know, get to know her, just letting it know when we need to ask to raise her, so.
You guys were given an awesome opportunity to go out to Georgetown and go through this whole capstone process, and just thankful that you did it here in Sioux Falls, so we can work with you.
It was, it was a life-changing week, in my opinion. I came back thinking about prosecution completely different than when I was there.
Thank you very much for the presentation and for the, the progress that I'm seeing. I've been involved, uh, for the last about five years on the statewide, uh, JDAI Steering Committee, and what I'm hearing today is a long way from where we all were five years ago when this started. I think the better the board understands what all is being done, the better we can help to make decisions as things come forward from the administration. So thank you all for your hard work and, and, uh, Dr. Nold, for your involvement and, uh, very good report, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good. Brian, you want to go ahead with the organizational chart?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
A couple of months ago, I was meeting with, uh, Kate Parker and Kent Alberti on agenda planning, and Kate said, do you want to give us an update on all the changes that, that we have in the administrative ranks? I said, you bet. Well, one of the things we usually do at this retreat is go through the organizational chart. So I've given you an updated organizational chart. The good news this year is the updated organizational chart is only an update in names. For the first time, this is my fourth year, the beginning of my fourth year, for the first time in those four years, there's no change to the organizational chart from year three to year four, other than maybe people serving in a position. So maybe we're getting some comfort with the structure that we have. But we do have a lot of new faces, so I've got an organizational chart for all of you to look at, and I've also, um, put together a PowerPoint for you to see and view who our new faces are. Now, I didn't hear any gasps in the room, because there are several in the room that know I didn't put this PowerPoint together. Nobody outed me, so that was really kind of you. Uh, Becky Dorman couldn't be here today, and Becky Dorman put together the organizational chart. She's the keeper of that chart. She also, um, went above and beyond when I said I need something for the work session to inform the board on the changes. And my thought was a simple sheet of paper with, uh, last year's names and this year's names, and instead Becky came up with a, a far more informative, a piece for us. Uh, so we'll have, uh, I'll go through the administrative changes that we'll have this year. Uh, one will be Tim Kaler. Tim will be the new middle school principal at George McGovern. We'll go through these fairly quickly, Deanne. Um, next will be Steve Moore. Uh, Steve Moore is the, will be the assistant principal, actually is already the assistant principal at Roosevelt High School. Tish Kala will be the senior coordinator of student support services. If you're wondering what position is that, that was the position that Celeste Ute-Burrow was in in years past. I'm going to ask Deb to help me with this last name to make sure I get it correct.
Jay Hingeri.
Elizabeth Jay Hingeri, I'm sorry to catch you as you were taking a drink there, uh, will be the new coordinator of early childhood programs, and some of these titles get long, if you're wondering what program is that. Picture Val Peters. That was the position that Val Peters occupied so well for so many years. That was the position that Val Peters occupied so well for so many years. This is a brand-new position, and it's a quasi-school district position, at least for a little while, but it is the, actually, Education Foundation position, and that will be, is staffed by Allison Struck. She's the new executive director for the Education Foundation. Not a new face, but a new position for Nancy Hagan. Nancy has been a longtime elementary principal. She's moving into Memorial Middle School, replacing Karen Aaron as the principal there. Also moving from the elementary ranks to the middle school ranks is Jane Zalinski. She will be replacing Twain Fink, and as you all know, Jane has been at Laura B. Anderson for the last several years. Lynn Gillette is moving from the middle school to the elementary school. She'll be next door at Robert Frost Elementary, replacing Colleen Werner, who retired. Kirsten Dobberpool is going from an intern at Hayward to being the principal at John Harris. And Wade Hellison is moving from the intern ranks as well, and replacing Jane Zalinski at Laura B. Anderson. Casey Miley is not new to the district, but is new to his, the position of coordinator of athletics and PE. He'll be replacing his father, Mark Miley, in that position. And we also have a number of interns new to the district, some new to the district, some just new to their position. Carol Beldon will be in special services. Amanda Nelson will be in a newly-created intern position at Roosevelt High School. That was created to handle the over-enrollment that we have at Roosevelt High School. Jen Van Dyne will be at Pettigrew Elementary. Jaclyn, that looks strange to me, because we call her Jackie. Paseka will be at Horace Mann. And Michael Thornton will be new to the district, and he'll be at Lowell Elementary.
So were most of these folks all teachers, or were they in other roles prior to their admin role?
Um, Jen was a counselor.
She was an intern at, or she was an instructional coach at Roosevelt.
She was an instructional, she was an instructional coach. Michael Thornton was in a similar position in the Baltimore area, the east coast, I just remember.
South Carolina.
Huh.
Sorry.
I don't think so. But, a long ways from here, a long ways from here. Amanda Nelson is a classroom teacher at Lincoln High School, moving into the intern position at Roosevelt. And Jackie was actually a teacher at Horace Mann, so she's moving up within her building there. And Carol Beldon?
Was an instructional coach.
Was an instructional coach in the district. So, four of the five interns worked in the district in some capacity already. And then you see the organizational chart. Any questions on the organizational charts? Or, I was going to say, or on any of the hires? I'd rather not go into questions on the hires.
No, I appreciate it. I just, I knew with all the, I knew there wasn't much movement here, you know, with the IPC.
The structure hasn't changed.
The structure hasn't changed, but just with the, you know, with so many principals retiring and moving around, so I appreciate, and I, you can thank Becky.
Yeah.
Seeing the photos are great.
That's typical for the folks who work in IPC. Becky did far more than I would have done in this scenario. She certainly deserves the credit.
How many admin interns do we have now?
Dr. Boyson, you're no longer in your first year, so I would think in your second year, you would know that right away.
I don't get a pass anymore.
Approximately.
Twenty?
I would say twenty.
Okay.
I was thinking instructional coaches. We have thirty-eight instructional coaches, interns.
Twenty interns?
Okay.
Towards twenty, I'd say.
Well, we have twenty-four elementarys.
We do, but a couple of those are in the same building.
Right.
So, maybe it's, maybe it's towards twenty-five. By the time we think of special services, and by the time we think of adding one at Roosevelt, I'll bet we're close to twenty-five.
And so those five are first years, and everybody else is like a second through up to four, is that correct? Can they be in that program for about four?
Well, to be an intern, they would be a second year or third year. After their third year, they become a dean of students.
Okay.
And then they would progress ultimately into an assistant principal.
Okay.
So they would be in one of those positions.
Okay.
We also do have a middle school intern as well. So, twenty-five's probably pretty close.
Sure. Thank you.
You bet. Next, we're going to talk about the strategic plan. I'm going to ask Mr. Morrison.
Board member Parker has requested a short break, and I would be more than happy to accommodate her on that.
Fair enough.
All right, thank you.
Are you ready?
I am ready.
Okay, well, we'll go to the next piece of the Agenda Puzzle, which is the Strategic Plan. We'll talk to you today, really kind of give you an update. And just remember on the Strategic Plan, there's kind of a couple of pieces this time of year. This is the piece where we kind of inform you, not kind of, this is the piece where we inform you what our progress has been over the last year. And then there'll be another piece coming to you at a board meeting here soon on what's the direction as we move forward. So that's when you give me my marching orders for the year. Today's just kind of a little bit of a report card on the process. Here to give you that and to lead that for us is Doug Morrison.
Yeah, I think I'm just orchestrating this and I'm kind of the pull everything together. But as Dr. Maher said, well, this is, you know, we've got a very detailed goals and strategies document that you guys have all seen with detailed dates and milestones. So what you'll see here is we've kind of pulled that out into a PowerPoint to just, you know, create some, just the points of reference of what we've accomplished over the past year. We're in the process of putting together that very detailed plan for this next school year. And so we've met several times over the summer and kind of bringing that together. We will go through that with the general admin on Monday. And then in September, we'll bring that to you. And then there's a scorecard piece, which, you know, we have 23 external indicators that we said we would move from X in the baseline year to X five years from now. And so that'll be a piece we'll bring along with the goals and strategies in September. You know, some of the stuff is trickling in, but you know, until the state report cards are complete in October, we won't have final, final numbers. But we are beginning to see pretty much where a lot of that stuff's going to land. And so we'll update you on all those strategic indicators in September. So at this point today, we've just broke it into the four main sections that we track the Strategic Plan in. And I'm going to turn it over first to Dr. Boyson, and we'll just kind of go one after another here, so.
All right. Priority area one, student outcomes, and they asked us. The first one is monitoring students at risk for not graduating. And each high school team has built, each high school has a team that meets regularly to discuss those students and are they on track for graduating? And last year, our graduation rate was 83.7. So we're waiting to see how those final numbers come in, and we'll report on that in September to you. The other, the next component was struggling readers study. We completed that year two of the Academic Return on Investment for the Literacy in Action. And again, that program was eliminated. And in August, I'll have a board report for you talking about our next steps with literacy in the elementary. The Summer Climb pilot will finish up its third year this summer. And students, there was a clip last night, I think, out on Facebook about Summer Climb and all the fun things that are going on in that. And again, we'll have a board report for you coming up in October on that final report on Summer Climb and the direction there. District's capacity for data-driven decision expanded the NWA MAP assessment into seventh and eighth grade for this coming school year. So that's, we've expanded, will be K8. The next one, elevation tool, was implemented at all our EL center sites to collect that language acquisition data. And that way, it allows teachers and admin to be able to access the data points ongoing throughout the year. And they have found that beneficial. Last week, we had the admin team in, and they were doing some PSYOP training and looking at best practices for, in those EL classrooms. And they pulled their data, and they were really using that data to inform some instruction. So that's a good tool for them to look at what's working in those classrooms with those students. And then next one, multiple pathways for students, expanding Code to the Future. It was implemented in the three elementaries, but expanding it into Whittier and George McGovern for the fall of 2018. Those teachers were in training, those middle school teachers were in training this week. And elementary will come back next week for training on Code to the Future. So looking forward to the benefits there. SD Pass is a partnership between DSU, Sioux Falls School District, and STI. And really looking at building, starting with that computer science pathway, and how do we work from our Code to the Future students into that high school and on to computer networking or cybersecurity with DSU. And we're continuing to build that pathway where they earn stackable certificates, high school credits, or college credits while they're in high school. And we're looking outside of the state to help develop that pathway too this coming And student internship program, that was developed last year in coordination with a city grant and Department of Labor. We have career coaches that work in all our high schools to help set up job shadows and internship opportunities for students. We ended the year with 220 internships, which is 57 higher than it was the year before. So, and that was the second half of the year because we started that with second semester. So when you think of one semester, and we increased it 57, we're anxious to see what that opportunity holds for students this year. There really did enjoy that opportunity and found the jobs that were maybe not the best fit for them, so.
We have a board report.
We do have a board report coming up on that the end of August, so. And then ongoing program evaluation, looking at the gifted ed program. And again, we use that NWA MAP as a screener to identify students in the gifted, for the gifted program. And we identified 117 additional students that were missed through that process. And so that tool has just, the NWA continues to be a good tool for us to use to look for different, for the strengths of the students. Spanish immersion, we finished the ACTFUL report. And looking forward to the information that that provided throughout the summer. They were able to use the information from ACTFUL to set proficiency targets at each grade level using that stamp. They developed some IPAs, that, those integrated performance assessments that help, now that we have the stamp and those targets, we're, be able to identify, are we making the growth that we need to according to that? So that report was beneficial, and that 10th year of that Spanish immersion program. And we go on to school.
Climate and culture.
Here we are. So a year ago, through the board process, we established that we would have a district attendance council. Membership was elicited throughout our community and district. That group has met four times this year. One of the community members happens to be a local legislator. And so the group continues to have good dialogue about what we're doing and things we need to impact. So as we come back this fall, we're going to look at some items related to the Juvenile Justice reinvestment initiative and how that relates to truancy and do some work there. Our truancy protocols were all updated to comply with those changes. And were implemented by our district staff this year. We implemented the Kinvo app at five schools this year, and will continue that pilot to have more authentic data at four schools as we come into the next year, three elementary and one middle. And then Doug and I will bring you a recommendation on where we go from there. I can tell you that preliminarily, our principals love Kinvo as a communication platform. They talk about parents who are responding to texts that didn't respond to phone calls or messages. What Doug and I are wondering is, what will the impact be on attendance? So they really sort out as two different issues.
Is there a reason why Washington was discontinued from that list?
Um, Washington felt like the data that was provided through Kinvo, they were able to use through Infinite Campus. And so their attendance team felt like they had two different things going and one. So some of it's just where different attendance teams are in processes. We opened the Tier Two Room at Laura Wilder. We brought you that report in June. This fall, we'll have seven Tier Two Rooms in operation across elementary schools. And we brought you that report in June, what that data looked like. Mr. Nold brought your report in early July about the Success Coordinator Program Evaluation, what we've accomplished this year and what will happen this next year. And we've implemented procedures and tools last August related to our staff who travel between buildings or go into homes to implement some safety procedures. And we're up and ready to remind everyone of those procedures as we start this next school year. So lastly, culturally responsive practices, which was interesting to hear our earlier guests talk about. Our schools are currently in the process of putting activities specific to their school in their school improvement plans. In June, at the summer symposium, we had a national researcher, an author here named Shawkey Holly, who I think really pressed questions to us that really made us all think and really made us reflect on some of the things that they talked about related to internal biases. And there are also external biases. So that work will continue, but that's where we've been this year. Questions about two?
The third area with district staff, first of all, one that was presented as a board report with the teacher internship program. There's actually two reports and one with the teacher pathway and teacher internship. But a year ago, we did have five adult interns who were placed in classrooms through that nine-week internship program. Four of the five enrolled in the university master's program, which is, is great to hear. And we hope eventually here, they will come back and be teachers in the Sioux Falls School District. For the 1819 school year, we had 38 applicants. And just met with the majority of those 10 individuals that were selected this morning with their teachers that they're being placed with as that introductory meeting and informational time. So they will get started, many of which in the first quarter of this next school year, but others throughout the school year. So a nine-week internship program. The teacher pathway program is for our students. And for the 1819 school year, that'll be our first year having that course provided in our high schools. And currently, there's just over 140 students that are signed up to take that course. So that was an outstanding number. We were hoping and would be happy with half of that, but over 140 signed up and are in those programs, so.
That is workforce development.
If 10% of that goes through, that'd be incredible. Uh, so that, those are two programs that were a board report much earlier this past year. The revision was also made in the spring of 2017. This was one of the strategic initiatives for the teacher evaluation process. That was implemented in the 2017-18 school year. One thing we continue to work with, with our administrators, is that meaningful feedback that we give our teachers, you know, for their growth, individual growth. And that's a significant component compared to what's on paper, to what we, we do and carry through on. Because that feedback is meaningful for all employees, but especially for our teachers that are in the classroom to get that feedback. The annual Gallup engagement survey, as you recall from board report earlier this last fall, the metric stayed fairly even with the numbers, but our participation rate had gone up significantly and at that 94% at that time. So that will continue to be given annually at this point. The Building Technology Integration Team Leaders, that implementation and that model is currently in the review process. And then the final one, the district-run State Mentor Program was coordinated by Dr. Boyson. And 68 new teachers last year participated in that State Mentor Program for the Sioux Falls School District. So really, it's a state-run program, but we truly have a large number of them right here in our district, that it's almost a Sioux Falls School District state-run program. So, but that is a great way for those individuals to be matched up with someone to be a mentor. So that's an update on the district staff. Questions I could answer?
Thank you. I am here to talk to you about community engagement and the progress made in the past year. One of our goals is to always hear from our stakeholders to better understand their thoughts and ideas. We have gotten into the habit of April being a survey month. We were proud that 4,000 parents responded to us in April on a survey, asking whether they felt informed about what was happening at their child's school, if they're satisfied with their school. I feel my student is supported socially and emotionally as well as academically. So that number of responses is nice to see, and our numbers of strongly agree and agree sit somewhere in the 75% range. There's about 18% that are neutral, and then the rest are maybe not as happy. We ask very similar questions of our middle school students and our high school students. You can see the number of respondents there. And after Dr. Boyson's summer symposium, we survey the stakeholders who participated in that as well. And there were 350 feedback forms submitted from the summer symposium. So again, always looking at that information and finding out what was valuable to the attendee or to the parent, middle school or high school student, and then using that to inform our decisions for the future. Focus groups this past year, as you know, focused mostly on the increasing enrollment and the conversation about facilities, engaging the community and dialogue about enrollment trends and the potential impact on facilities. Dr. Maher already has given dozens of presentations about the $190 million bond election coming up September 18th. Doug Morrison has already knocked off a couple of those as well, and they have many, many more to come. There, there are two representatives in the community that have been speaking to service clubs, church groups, booster clubs, really anyone that is interested in learning more about the $190 million bond election. We continue on an ongoing basis to research options for K-12 educational delivery, always looking for the next consideration, something we should try, explore. I think you can see that by the pilots in the programs that we've done, that we aren't afraid to try something new. And if it doesn't work, then we aren't afraid to recalculate and try something new. And then again, our, another key component of our, our surveying is our staff. And in addition to the Gallup survey, we also have a survey for them in April, asking them such questions as, I feel safe at school, my building has high expectations for students, and I have the information I need to be successful in my job. So again, using those points provided through those survey tools to see where we need to make changes or keep doing what we're doing. So that's community engagement.
Looks like we, maybe the high schools could learn something from the middle schools.
Yeah. You know, it's a little different. I think high schoolers probably get a little survey fatigue also, especially April is maybe not a great time for high school students who are, are maybe dreaming of something other than surveys, so, yeah.
And then there finally is a bunch of behind-the-scenes stuff that take a lot of work but don't get a lot of accolades. And the three-year technology plan was completed this last year, which a lot of work went into that by a lot of people across the district. The state accreditation completed, the special education program review. So again, those things take a lot of time and effort from a lot of people across the district, and both of those got great ratings from, from the state. So a great job was done there. And then finally, another thing that's happening behind the scenes is the replacement of the HR finance system, which you guys won't hear about unless people just don't get paid or get paid less than they should or something like that. So, you know, it's just something you won't hear about unless something goes wrong. But a lot of work and effort goes in by a lot of people to get something like that done. So that, that selection was made, and the actual implementation will be made throughout this year. Todd, anything you want to say about that?
Yeah, it's just going to go on throughout this year. We're trying to streamline some things and realign duties and make things more efficient. But it's basically a year-long process. So it'll be in effect a year from now. You guys, we'll all be getting paid off that system.
So that's kind of a recap of this last year and the major initiatives that have gone on. And I think in September, you'll see we've got an exciting year coming up with a lot of great initiatives and things that we're working on or will be working on across the district to try to move the needle on all of those 23 indicators that we're trying to move. So stand by for any questions.
Good work. Thank you.
Truly drives what we do. Your plan really drives what we do.
Yeah. I mean, we say it all the time, but it is a living, breathing document.
Yep, it really is. Yeah. Okay, well, the, the last thing from us today is policy development. In-house legal counsel, Kate Bartel Noack, is on vacation this week. And in knowing that this was going to be a topic for this work session, I know she has met with board members Ryder and Parker to go over the B policies. As you all know, we try to make sure that we review all of our policies within a five-year timeframe, and it's time for the B policies to be reviewed, or at least a majority of the B policies. And I'm going to turn it over to either Kate or Carly, whichever one picks up the baton and goes through that. And I would remind you too, that this is a review. You wouldn't, you wouldn't be doing anything in terms of a motion until the next board meeting.
Right. Yeah, I, so Carly and I did meet with, with Kate and walked through her suggested changes. A lot of them were either changes due to state law or reference updates, things like that. But did you guys get a copy ahead of time?
Yes, I think she posted it online too.
Were they posted? Okay. So if you have questions, just speak up, but we'll go through. Looking at BA, first one here, there were no changes made there. BB changed the, some of the terms as they relate to SDCL 13-8-2, Composition and Terms of Office of School Board Members. So you can see on page two of two, oh, no, sorry. That's, so that's all we have there, although I don't see a red line on those changes, but...
I wanted to make that mention though.
Oh, yeah, just terms shall be from one to three years initially and three years thereafter. That's right. It was just...
That was just based on the state law.
Right. Yeah, so no changes, but just some points to bring up there. BBAA, just formatting changes and added relevant legal reference. And just if I'm moving too fast, let me know. BBB, we updated this earlier this summer to comply with change in state law regarding reporting election information.
I think that's the one, two, three, four at the bottom where we are required to state exactly how many people voted. And we never had that before. So, yeah, so this one had already been updated prior.
Yeah. BBBE, again, change in state law. In some instances, the vacating member is to take part in the appointment of new member created needed to list vacancy reasons. So, so it's just if there's a vacancy, whether it's due to a board member resigning in the middle or, or one of the other reasons, so.
Yeah, so I think if you look at like one through seven, it's almost as if, not that the board member did something wrong, but like, you know, something adverse happened and they left, so they're clearly not going to be part of the vote to replace themselves, where the last three are more something, you know, I don't want to say natural, but you move out of boundaries or something else happens and nothing negative happened. So you could be part of that replacement of who that appointment is.
This is just conflict of interest.
Just more clarifications.
Yeah. And references policy AH on disclosing conflicts. BDB, again, updating the legal and policy references. Did add the president duty regarding committees, just that the president appoints all committees requiring school board participation. And that's how we've been practicing, so. BDC, no changes there. BDD, no changes there. BDE, just legal reference update. BDG, no changes. BE, we included the state law definition of an official meeting. BEDB, tongue twister, no changes. No changes to BEDC or BEDD. We haven't any changes here on out. No changes to BEDG. And then BEDH, we previously reviewed this and updated to include public input at work sessions. So you referenced that earlier.
Yeah, and this one actually, here Todd has a document. This doesn't have those changes reflected from the work session point, so what is being passed?
The one on the, the one on the website is correct, that, that has this document in it. Or this language in it. It's just, this was pulled from a prior version before the change. So it's right online.
We have an extra one here.
And it just goes through the rules for speaking at a work session, which is different than most prior.
So when we do the first reader review revise, this will be in what we get?
This is, well, this is, actually, this is no change. And what's out?
What's publicly available is correct. It's just what you're looking at.
Print it out.
Yeah.
Okay.
The old version.
Okay. Good. So, yeah, so we've already updated and approved that one. No changes to BEDI. And then BG relates to policy process. So recognizing the current policy review process. We deleted the website address. I, I had recommended that simply because it can change, you know, I mean, just...
Just like putting phone numbers into policy and stuff.
Right. Yeah, it's just easier to say, it's out on the website. Includes the public comment process, as mentioned in KEA. And then recognizes inadvertent conflicts in policy. And that's on page two of four.
So I'm seven, eight, and nine. If for some reason we have a policy that we didn't realize conflicted with what the state is saying, that it's like an out to say, well, that we default to what that is saying.
Yeah.
Which we didn't have in there before.
No changes to BI, BIA, BIB. We just had a typo on BIBA.
Well, and I think, just to go back to BIA, what we crossed out was the handbook part of that. part of that, and I don't know, I know I didn't have a handbook per se, but that's been several years, so Cynthia would be the newest person, and I know you have a process. I don't know that you hand somebody anything, which is just kind of what that inferred, so.
Or orientation.
Yeah.
We have an orientation, we talk, but there was no handbook that was presented.
Yeah.
So Kate suggested that we direct you to do that? No, I'm kidding.
We'd like that to be put together.
Yes, no. So, I mean, if that's the process, I think that that works. We just want it to be reflective of that, so someone's not looking for something.
Right, what we did is we go over pertinent topics with the incoming board member, and what I generally try to do is have the board president sit with that, so it's not just me saying thou shalt, rather it's us saying, this is how we've done it in the past.
Sure.
And really trying to bring somebody in to be part of a team, not to indoctrinate somebody into what we do.
Yeah, so I don't know if anybody has any other suggestions on that, but we felt like it was.
Unless you guys feel strongly about having a handbook?
I think I got one that's not a living, breathing document like our strategic plan is sitting on a shelf in my office.
We might have a binder about like this.
Yeah. So no changes to BIB. Like I said, BIBA is just a typo. Although I don't know where that typo was. Line eleven? Oh, values, yep, for the value. That's right, Carly cut that one.
Sorry.
It's okay. BIB. We were going to have you look at what the per diem rate was for state boards.
Same as when I got here, seventy-five dollars a day.
Seventy-five dollars a day.
I did notice one thing, since it said business manager on here, I looked at this one a little more closely. The reference on line twelve, the SDCL chapter thirteen-eight, thirty-seven, we should strike chapter, that would be thirteen-eight, but it's the specific reference of the section.
Okay.
Yeah, and so you check that annually, right? So you check it like every July or something?
Yeah, it's, when the legislature passes its general appropriations bill, it lists all the commissions and boards they have, what they are paid or can be paid. And so, like I said, it's been the same since I've been here, and I think it was the same when I started in the Department of Ed, so.
Yeah, it was more just curiosity for, and I know I looked online, and it was, I didn't think to go to appropriations, but I looked on the Board of Education website, and of course, nothing's there, so.
Yeah, and I think that was our question, which is, does it just says per day, but it didn't have the amount in here, so where does that come from? And then we couldn't find it online.
We would know in time for the budget, because we set our revenues based on.
Not that we would change it.
Legislature, but the policy says you'll get paid what they are allowed to be paid, so you don't have to change anything.
Right.
Sure.
What you can do is just change it with it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
That's it? Do you guys have any questions about those?
Well, Kate did all the hard work.
All right.
And I'm trying to, these are policy changes.
I was wondering, so are they?
That's technically first reading, right?
Or, I mean, to me, they all look like they would fall under review revise.
I would agree, yeah.
So we can take action.
Because they're just reference changes for the most part.
At our next board meeting as review revise.
I'm comfortable with that.
I certainly am.
Okay.
Okay, very good. Committee assignment reports. Sure.
Insurance we're off till September. Affordable housing, we have a meeting coming up August twenty-second. Let's see, and obviously, calendar we're off right now too. Sioux Falls Education Foundation, a lot going on. Allison Strucker has started, which we're starting to track there. We're in the process of applying for a VERRA grant. Hope that you hear the status of that next Tuesday, whatever, August meeting. The breakfast is coming up August ninth at the Holiday Inn Downtown at seven-thirty, eight AM.
That's this week?
And like, don't do that to me, it's going too fast in August. New teacher orientation is August thirteenth. So VERRA House this year is doing two fundraisers, so it can get a little confusing. They're doing, the first one is coming up here August twenty-fifth, and that's Hungry Hearts, and that funding, that will go to not just Sioux Falls School District, but probably Harrisburg as well, because of where VERRA was needed, as for funds for people who run their lunch accounts and other things. And then on Monday, October first, they're also having more just like your meal percentage who go to, from the VERRA House, will go to Sioux Falls Education Foundation.
I have zero updates. I believe we did policies. Head start is off for the summer. I'm assuming you've taken over chambers board?
I have.
Okay. And budget is?
Budget hasn't, I mean.
Will be off until it's quiet, we'll just say it's quiet.
Yeah, November is.
November one will kick off again.
Before that, we have to approve the timeline, I believe, right, in October sometime?
Yeah.
Yeah.
End of the year, how we came in, right before the second meeting in August.
Okay, so we will have a meeting?
Small meeting, yeah.
Okay.
And then there'll be a board report, the full board.
Okay. If you could get that date to me.
Got it.
I'm traveling.
It'd usually be like the Wednesday before that second meeting. Are you going to be here back by then?
I'm back Friday before school starts, so.
Okay.
Anyway, we can, seventeenth.
Yeah, that'll be fine. That'll be, I mean, you'll be back. So it'll be the Wednesday before the second meeting.
Yeah, we can do that offline.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, nothing to worry about.
Chamber board, I did attend last week, and Barry Dunn, president of SDSU, was there and did a nice job talking about how SDSU and the Sioux Falls business community in general, not just the chamber, worked together, and University Center and all of that kind of thing. They approved at the chamber board, the issues management committee had recommended to the chamber board to support the one hundred and ninety million dollar bond election, and they approved it at issues management. They indicated it was the quickest that they have ever approved a request for support by the issues management and unanimous support from the chamber board for the bond issue and bond election. So a ton of support from them for the effort going forward. I don't have any other committee reports.
I don't think I have any either. July's been like really quiet. Yeah, we have PATH next week, and my chamber, education, workforce development has not met, calendar hasn't met. We met for policy. That's all I got.
Well, we have a policy meeting in September, do you know?
I don't think so.
Okay.
But I'll check with Kate to make sure.
Okay.
I know we definitely have a committee meeting that morning, but I don't think we have policy.
Okay.
But I'm not positive.
Because I know we moved to quarterly meetings, so.
I think with this, the B policies being done, you may get September off.
Okay.
I'm not, I'll let.
Okay, thanks.
The small budget committee meeting? Probably the twenty-third of August.
As long as it's not, just get me through drop-offs.
Strike that, twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
I will be here on the twenty-second.
Board member Tulkey obviously is not here today. He's on an important business trip, and so he left at five AM this morning on what he told me was an important business trip, and I'm sure it was. So he didn't believe that Skype was available wherever the meeting, and.
He's too busy creating his memes.
Yeah, so, and I don't think, I don't think I have anything else.
Probably we only have the golf tournament and the Sioux Falls Marathon would be his two sports authority things that are coming up.
Yes.
Well, and the golf, yeah, golf tournament, yeah.
Southeast Tech Council, I did miss the last meeting of the tech council. We will have, speaking of policy and review, we have several policies that are going to come before us at the Southeast Tech meeting here at four o'clock, so lots of work going on out there also. Anything else to come before the board? Then we will adjourn.
What's the theme for the year? What's the theme for the kickoff? Is it a surprise? It's a surprise? Okay.
All I'll say is "r"rr.
That didn't give it away.
We just got an email from Dan about taking the bus. I think it's.
Yeah, of course, you can write out, get on the bus for, as I read the day.
It's seven-thirty on the.
Start at seven-fifty-five.
Seven-fifty-five.
On August twenty-first, Tuesday.
Seven-fifty-five. At the Pentagon.